It's pretty simple. I have a chart here and it says, refer to this time series chart for electricity generation in the United States from year 2020, 2000 to 2020. So this is the same one I showed in lecture. I can zoom in on that a little bit. See these different trend lines? And we see this fall in coal and then this replacement with another resource, natural gas. And that gets to the first question, which electricity generation resource has decreased over the last 20 years? And which resources it primarily being replaced with? So as much as I wish it was wind and solar, solar, it's really being replaced with natural gas. That brings me to an interesting article that I saw in the Washington Post the other day. Let me see if I have that around. It's always risky to share your internet without looking at what is on your internet. Let's give it a go. Here it is. So it's in the Washington Post, but it's actually written by Bloomberg Energy, which is Bloomberg's a big finance conglomerate over in New York. And they have an energy sector because you know, as you've learned from this class, it's about eight to 10% of the economy. So if you're going to be in finance, you better be in energy too. And this article says, US greenhouse gas emissions set to drop to lowest level in three decades. So it's getting down to 1993 or 1983 levels. I forget which one. And does anybody know why where our emissions are getting so low?
Because of the pandemic?
Yeah, that's exactly right. It's not even just the switch from coal to natural gas. There was this slow stagnation of our emissions. Our emissions weren't growing. They were going down a little bit, but then they fell a lot this year. By almost 10% this year, and that's all due to the pandemic. So, and this, this gets to more questions that you'll find in the final. At least the very last question, the final, I want you to kind of envision a, a dream, energy climate society in the future, 50 years from now. So why would the coronavirus cause emissions to go down?
Less people are traveling?
Less people are traveling, yeah. And let's put it in terms of, that's exactly right, but let's put it in terms of this class. So we learned about the Kaya identity. How does coronavirus change the Kaya identity?
Less people in each area using everything. So we lessen the, um, the whatever, I can't remember what it's called.
Demand.
Yeah. That's exactly right. Yeah. So there's, you can apply the Kaya identity to anything. So one thing you could apply it to is the population of air travel or the air travel sector. And the population has gone down significantly. The wealth is still there. The energy intensity is the same. It still takes the same amount of jet fuel to get to Hawaii. But the population has gone way, way down. So then the energy and emissions associated with that sector of the economy has dropped significantly. Also just ground transportation too, has gone, gone down significantly too. So have a think about what the Kaya identity means. Cause I'll have, I'll have a question, the last question on the final where you think about the Kaya identity. Think about what humans actually need to, to live happy, happy fulfilling lives. And how can we use the Kaya identity to reduce emissions, reduce energy consumption in some future society? Combining that with renewables and that sort of thing. All right. I just thought this was an interesting, interesting article. Yeah. Coronavirus has done more for climate change than I ever have or ever will, oh well. So back to the homework. So we can all work through this together a little bit. The next one is, let me make sure, am I sharing? Am I actually sharing the homework anymore? It's not highlighted. Think so. Am I? Yeah. Okay. Question two, which renewable resource provides more electricity today, the most electricity? My grammar is wrong. Any guesses?
It's a, it's between wind and hydroelectric, it looks like.
Actually tell what it is.
It looks like it's about to have winds take over.
Excellent. So this was a trick question. I wanted you all to basically say exactly that, that I can't really tell, but it looks like wind's about to take over. Cause that's, that's what's going on. We're at an exciting moment in energy history. Can't you feel it? Isn't it so exciting? No. So wind, wind should take over hydro by next year in the United States. All right. So that checks off that one. Next question, which renewable resource has grown the fastest relatively in the last five years? That's, we can look at this chunk here.
I did notice that natural gas has grown more in total output. But if you're talking about percentage wise growth versus where it started, then it's different.
Yeah. So yeah, good qualification there. So when I use a term or when a statistician uses a term like relatively, it usually means relative to something relative to itself is usually what it means. So you take, you would, and this you can just eyeball it, but let's look at solar, for example, here in sky blue, I'm guessing. So you would look at the level it was five years ago. And then you'd think about what the relative growth from there to there. Well, it looks like it's, it's, it's grown by like six, seven X. So that's six, six to 700%. Whereas looking at wind, it's maybe doubled. So that'd be like a hundred percent growth or 200% growth, depending on how you want to phrase that. Grown two X, this has grown seven X. Looking at gas. Let's, let's use the same peak, the same time of the year. So it's grown from about here to here. So it's grown about 33%. 1.3X. So in relative terms, solar is really taking off. And that's what we've really seen. And again, that's because of that precipitous drop in price in manufacturing solar cells that happened between about 2010 and 2013. When manufacturers in Taiwan and China moved from computer chip grade silicon in solar panel manufacturing to a much lower quality silicon, which is totally fine for solar panels, but wouldn't make a computer work. But allowed really drastic reductions in costs. And now solar panels are, are cheap, relatively cheap. Still, still not accessible to the average person, obviously. So I will acknowledge privilege where it's, where it's there. So that's, that's the answer there. The renewable resource that's growing the fastest right now is solar. And it's what the one that's grown the most in the last five years. Next one. Why does the solar trend line have a wiggle to it?
That seasons?
Yep, that's exactly it. Let me pull up my own system here. So yeah, in the northern hemisphere on this planet, it's sunnier in the summertime. So pull up this, I don't know if this is going to work very well. Have this camera to train to focus on my eyeballs. So maybe I gotta go like this. So this is solar production on my house for the last. And it focuses not working out. Anyways, the peak is in July and then the shoulders that you see is January and the current month, November. And I'm guessing December will be less than November. So this wiggle that you see in this, this energy information administration chart in solar is just due to seasonality. But it's important thing to consider, right? Especially in a place like the Pacific Northwest, when do we use the most amount of energy here?
In the winter.
In the winter, right. That's when it's cold and that's when everybody is either firing up their natural gas furnaces or boilers or their electric heat pumps or electric heaters. And so now that answers, I think, one of the next questions. Why does gas and coal generation have an opposite or mirrored wiggle to solar? So natural gas and solar, they do not care what the sun's doing. They do not care about the seasons at all in terms of their production, right? It's just dead stuff in the ground that we dig up. But we burn a lot more of it in the wintertime. And you can see that in this chart. When the year turns over, following a year turnover, will we get a peak in, in natural gas or a peak in coal? And then a slightly delayed peak in the natural gas each time. But you can see that they're kind of mirroring each other, these peaks. And that's happening because we burn the most fossil fuels. We need the most electricity in January in the northern hemisphere. That may very well shift in the next 50 years with global warming. You go to a place like California, especially Southern California, San Diego County. They burn the most natural gas. When do you think they burn the most natural gas?
Summer.
Summer.
Air conditioning.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So yeah, July and August is when, when yeah, Orange County, LA County and San Diego are all burning the most gas. And air conditioning is now just beginning to become a thing here in, in Bellingham. People are installing heat pumps and that sort of stuff. So it's, it'll be an interesting shift. Okay. Yeah. What was I going to say? If, if you are interested in this, this energy game, energy and society, energy science, energy policy, air conditioning is going to be a huge energy sink in the next, next couple of decades. And figure out how to make air conditioning more efficient, more equitable is a huge opportunity. Especially in places in developing nations. I've been to a couple, a couple of places like Dubai, Mumbai, Nairobi. And there's these huge apartment blocks and they have, each window has its own individual air conditioner. They're called window bangers. You may have seen them if you didn't grow up in the Pacific Northwest. I even have friends in Portland because Portland gets ridiculously hot in the summer. You just install like a little air conditioner in your window. They're very inefficient. For several reasons, they, they, they're not thermally, well thermally insulated. And they often are installed in windows that are facing the sun because those are the hottest rooms. And so the, the hot reservoir is, is really hot because it's in the sun. And they would become much, much more efficient, especially in those big high rise apartments in Mumbai. If there was a centralized heat pump that then provided cold air everywhere. And so people are coming up with different business models. Like they will go to an apartment building and then say, okay, I will spend $60,000 of investor money to build a big heat pump in the middle of this apartment building. And then now I will sell a line from this heat pump to each apartment unit for, I don't know, $3 a month. And that would be cheaper than the amount of electricity required to run a window banger. And so the apartment renter would save money. There'd be far less energy use, far more carbon emissions. And the investor would slowly make money over time. So different ideas like that are starting to take off. But again, when I talked about the challenges with renewable resources app or challenges with renewable resources, this sort of investment takes a while to pay for itself. It's not like investing in, in information technology. And so you need to have, you need the investment dollars, but you also need a conscientious investor, someone that's willing to take a slower, lower return for the sake of, you know, helping out things. And so this is where, you know, philanthropic foundations can be really beneficial. Like Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, for example. And they're just starting to get into energy, which is exciting. Okay. So these, I'm, I'm talking about all this because this is the stuff I'm thinking about. And this is the stuff that will help you think about what you want to get into, if you want to get into the space and, and more directly and less significant. It'll help you answer a question on the final. These sorts of ideas, how can we, how can we make changes that both benefit people and the, and the planet at the same time? All right. Why does gas coal have the opposite wiggle? Okay, six, number six, identify three reasons why societies should transition from fossil fuels to renewables. Any thoughts on this? I'll open up the chat if people don't want to talk in front of their microphone. It's wrong. Question, question six, why, why should societies transition from fossil fuels to renewables?
There is the obvious one, the less greenhouse gas emissions.
Yep. That's, that is the obvious one. But there's myriad other benefits and sometimes it's easier to think about what the fossil fuels are doing.
The safety and health of others.
Excellent. Yeah. So this isn't something I touched on yet in this class, I probably won't, but if we talk about it in energy policy classes and energy and, energy and environment 380. Where are the fossil fuel burning plants located usually in a city?
Low income areas.
Low income areas. That's exactly right. So Puget Sound Energy is building this massive new natural gas storage facility. And it's located in the poorest neighborhood in Tacoma. And that's, it's unhealthy because of sulfur in the glass, gas, and also if this thing, you know, leaks or explodes or something, the lowest income people are going to, are going to be hurt. So fossil fuel burning is unhealthy. And the burning of those fossil fuels occurs in low income places. Often the harvesting occurs in, in, in in economically challenged locations as well. So less energy expenditure on harvesting, Aaron mentioned that, yeah. So then that energy analysis is starting to look better and better for renewables than, than fossil fuels. There was a New Yorker article, I want to say like five years ago on North Dakota, the big shale boom there and how it's completely changed these towns. They were very traditional conservative. Yeah, probably a little too white, but slow country rural towns in North Dakota. And now with the, the shale boom there, they've been completely changed. Cause now people without a college education, and I know there's good people that don't have college educations can go there and, and drill and lay pipe. Nothing's wrong with rural towns, Katie. And in point in fact, these rural towns got ruined by the, by the shale industry. And that's what this New Yorker article is about. So then people can come in there, drill, lay pipe, get paid over a hundred K a year. And it's usually young men between 18 and 30 doing this work. They do not have families. They're not married and they spend their tremendous amount of money on things like drugs and prostitution. And so two, two economic things happened to these towns. It brought in a lot of unsavory things like drugs and prostitution. And it raised the, the price, the cost of living in these towns significantly. Because they had this extra cash, the, the price of housing apartments and all these things really went up. This also happened in Fort McMurray in Alberta with the tar sands. There's a Goodvice documentary on that. And then there's this movie that, that is based around a man camp in Wyoming. I'm blanking on the name. Rayner, oh, Wind River, Wind River. I think it's still on, on Netflix or Amazon, one of those two. It's got, I forget the actor, Ryan Rayner and, and somebody Olson, Elizabeth Olson. And so it's based around this, this man camp where they're building pipelines to extract gas near Wyoming. And so these man camps, they're a real phenomena and they've been written about in a lot of energy justice forums. And so the oil companies hire a bunch of young people to live in trailers and build this pipe along, along the way. And this is a big problem in British Columbia too. And it's, yeah, it's just a bunch of young men with too much money and not anything to do. And in this movie Wind River, which is not a true story, but I could easily imagine it being a true story. There's rape of an indigenous woman that takes place and the fallout from that is the rest, the plot of that movie. And so fossil fuel. What's happening with Standing Rock right now? Good question. I, I don't know. I should read up on that. My last knowledge of this sorts of things, the price in oil and gas has been depressed so much that a lot of these marginal reserves and extraction of fossil fuels is not profitable. So a lot of these projects are just grounded right now. And maybe that's what's happening with Standing Rock, but I'm not sure. That's something I need to study up. Point of this whole digression is that fossil fuel extraction is, is a, is a fast and loose business that often involves unsavory characters. And they go from town to town, they take what they need. And then they move on and change the town forever. And it's, it's usually for the worse. Meanwhile, most of the money gets filtered to, to London and Houston and Toronto. And places where these multinational oil companies exist. And so it's, it's kind of the same thing that's happened with the Niger Delta, but on a, on a much smaller scale and a much more American scale. Sorts of things do not happen with renewable resources. Renewable resources. So that's another reason why we should transition to renewables. Yeah. And Aaron said it very succinctly, establishing renewables as an industry is more economically sustainable. It provides more steady growth. Nothing wrong with small towns, Katie. I'm from a small town myself.
So am I. I'm living in one right now.
Cool. Let's see what else is going on. So that's two reasons we've come up with. And I saw Logan mention preserve biodiversity. Yeah. So renewables are less, much less damaging to the environments. You know, mountaintop removal in the Appalachia for coal. The tar sands in Alberta. These, and then not to mention massive oil spills that happen, they seem to happen about every 10 years. Much more damaging to, to marine and terrestrial life and limit biodiversity in general. I'm sure you guys can come up with a bunch more reasons, but I just want, I just wanted to, to bring the renew, the argument for renewables beyond just climate change. Because some people don't subscribe to climate change. And so we can say there's many other great reasons why we should switch to it. Green jobs are certainly a thing. You make, there's much more jobs provided in the renewable industry right now because of its, its growth trajectory and its projection for growth than something than the fossil fuel industry. All right. Moving on. Refer to the Enrel Wind and Solar Resources map, slides nine and 32 respectively. Identify the best regions for wind and solar. What are some issues or challenges with these locations? Yeah. So let's switch to that. Stop share. Share. Wind and solar. Maximize. Move all people over here. So we have these two maps that Enrel produced. Enrel again is the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. It's located near Boulder, Colorado. Great place to work if you're so inclined. So here's the wind, average annual wind speed map at 80 meters high for the United States. And the question in the homework said, identify the best region for wind. And then what's an issue or a challenge with that location? So what are your thoughts? Aaron writes, best locations for solar tend to be away from major population centers. Same for wind. Yep. And there's a second stat. So you can see these massive wind resources here in the Great Plains, and it's again, just due to boundary friction effects. There are less trees, less hills here to slow the wind down. Oklahoma is pretty windy there and yet tornadoes would destroy them. Yeah, that is a problem. And wind turbines do go down in, in severe weather events. And then the other great location is the coasts, as Adam recognized. But it gets much, much more expensive to build a wind turbine on the coast. Anybody know how many offshore wind turbines are in, in America? Anybody want to take a guess?
I don't know, but probably not many.
Yeah, that's a good guess. The answer, the answer used to be a lot more cute. Two years ago it was zero. But now I think there's like two or three and they're built on the eastern seaboard here off of, off of Cape Cod. There are plans to put a string of wind turbines all along the eastern seaboard. Cause this is like from Boston to New York, it's basically one like continuous city. And so build turbines all along the eastern seaboard, then high voltage DC power lines to connect them all. That's, it's an interesting idea. But as of right now, the wind is blowing where the people aren't. So that's, that's, that's the biggest problem. The United Kingdom and Holland have built so much offshore wind just because population densities there are greater. And there's these tidal inlets where it's really opportunistic to, to place the wind turbines. So let's switch over to the solar map. Here's a solar map. This fares better than the wind. But again, the greatest concentration of the resources is in the Mojave Desert. And the Sonora Desert down here. And so this is, this is not a very densely populated region, but it is, there are high voltage DC power lines that could connect those locations to populations like LA, Phoenix and, and San Diego. So it could work out better. But with solar, it's already cost effective to have small scale solar. It's not as cost, cost effective as utility scale, but you can put it on plate, on, you know, houses, roofs and commercial buildings roofs. So the picture's a little better. But in general, yeah, the best solar is, is again, not correlated, correlated with the population centers. And this becomes especially true looking worldwide. So as a percentage of population of energy generation per, per population, Germany actually has the highest amount of solar panels installed. Like you take the gigawatts of installed solar capacity divided by the number of people, Germany wins. They've been deploying solar a lot this last decade. So much in fact, that they've driven down the overall world capacity factor for solar. So the capacity factor for solar in Bellingham is around like 15%. Down in California, it'd be in the mid twenties to upper twenties. But the global solar average is like 11%. And that's because there's so many solar panels in Germany. So many, Adam writes, what's up with Chile here? So Chile has an exceptional solar resource for two reasons. So from Peru to Chile is the Atacama Desert. And the Atacama Desert, there are places where in the Atacama where it only rains like once every 200 years. And so there's, there are no clouds. And so it's just got this exceptional solar resource. And also it gains quickly in elevation. The higher you go up, the more likely you'll get sunburned. That's why you can get sunburned skiing in the middle of the winter. And so it's high elevation desert and that makes for exceptional solar resource. So that's what's happening in the Himalayas over here. And Sahara. But this, yeah, this, this is the desertiest and one of the highest places in the world. So that's why solar is really, really great there. But nobody lives there at all. But there's interesting applications. I was working with this energy company down there. I didn't get to go there. I'm bummed about that, but we were building a pumped hydro storage facility that ran on solar power.
I didn't get to go there, I'm bummed about that, but we were building a pumped hydro storage facility that ran on solar power and pumped water uphill during the day on the solar energy and then ran water downhill at night to continue to generate electricity. But it's for something I'm not so happy about is for massive copper mine down there, but at least it's running on renewable energy, I guess. If the bad's gonna happen no matter what, you can make the bad a little less bad, you know, one of those capitulations. So that's about it for the homework. I'm happy to take questions and we can talk about, talk about the final a little bit, too. Yeah, how ironic indeed. And there's a line from an old movie that said like, the best way to rot the system is to work from within. Sometimes I espouse that philosophy. But I'm not going to say anything that's going to get me fired. Did I go through one through five in the first ten minutes? Yeah, I can go over those a little bit more. Can solar and wind energy be stored transported? Yes. So this is why energy storage is a very pursued and exciting topic in energy sciences right now and energy policy. So ninety nine percent of all energy so far is stored. Electrical energy is stored as as hydro energy, as pumped hydro. Either just don't let as much water go through the dam and then it'll slowly store that potential energy behind the dam in the reservoir, or you can pump it uphill and then let it run back down. So one of the biggest ones is in Wales, it's called Dinover. And it can generate six gigawatts of power within like a minute. And it's used in interesting ways. One of the ways they use it is during big World Cup games and any big soccer match in England. And right before thirty seconds before halftime starts, they fired up full full six gigawatts because they know everybody in the United Kingdom is going to put their tea on in thirty seconds. And so everybody's going to be simultaneously pulling this huge, huge amount of power and they they prepare for it. Otherwise, electrical energy stored is is lead acid batteries, I mean, not lead acid batteries, lithium ion batteries. And so there's big facilities being put in place by Tesla. There's a hundred and twenty megawatt one that was built in Australia, the building one in Hawaii right now. We even have a lithium ion backup battery way up in Maple Falls or Glacier on Baker Highway that P S E put in because they're they're kind of at the very end of the line for P S E's web of of power lines. And so when when a power line goes down from a storm or anything like we had the other day, at least that far extremity, which would normally be one of the last places to be reconnected, they can they can run off that battery for a while, which is cool. But yeah, not too much energy storage yet mainly because it's just really expensive. The technology isn't quite there yet. And so that's why it's an exciting field. All right, so I'm getting a few questions about the first five. So it's the first five questions, we were talking about that graph. Share screen, go back to. Where'd my Adobe go? It's gone. Did I close it? Here it is. Let's try again. Up share. Share screen. All right, well, I figured this out, Katie. Somebody asked why? Three reasons why societies should transition from fossil fuels to renewables. The obvious one is climate change, but there's less obvious ones like environmental protection, social equity, healthier air. Yeah, and and less harmful extraction techniques. And then the first five are basically all about this graph. And so you just have to have a look at this and think about what it means. Which electricity generation resources decreased over the last twenty years? That's definitely coal. You can see that there. And then it's being replaced by natural gas and a little bit by renewables. Which renewable is growing the fastest relatively, so relative to itself? That's solar, because you can see from this point to this point, it's it's jumped by about six X, whereas winds about doubled. And hydro stayed relatively flat. Question number two is a trick question, which renewable resource provides the most electricity today? It's hard to tell if it's hydro or wind. It looks like it's about a tie, but you can you can see that wind will most likely will will certainly be producing more electricity than hydropower pretty soon. Why does the solar trend line have a wiggle to it? Seasons sunnier in the summertime, less so in the winter. Why does gas and coal generation have the mirrored wiggle to it? Why are they peaking more in winter, not summer? And that's because in the northern hemisphere, it's cold in the winter and we need more energy to provide heat to buildings. And that comes from gas and coal. Let me think about the final. Let me check the chat, see if anything else happened. Does your app show your energy consumption per year? A good question. No, it doesn't, but I have another app that does. It's really cool, or at least what I think is cool. It's called Emporia and you you can attach a bunch of little inductors, little loop wire loops to your power main and the different fuses that are attached to your power main. And so you pick the ones that you're you're interested in looking at, and that's what unfortunately, it only comes with eight. So I've hooked some up to my heat pump water heaters. I have two heat pump water heaters hooked, one to my solar panels to see how much they're generating. One to my plug in hybrid car and then forget what else I'm looking at. I think my garage, which doesn't take much. Yeah, let's let me make my I'm not sharing anything, so my video should be big. I'm going to turn the focus to manual so I can get this to actually. Okay, is that showing up? Yeah, so let's see, what was that doing? This is this is what it's pulling in real time right now. I wish I could see my screen bigger because I can't hold my phone this way and read it at the same time. So it looks like, yeah, I'm only generating two hundred and fifty watts of solar right now. And what's what's pulling the most? My living room. So that's this computer right now is pulling two hundred watts. And then I can go like switch it to month. So this month, it looks like I've generated about one hundred kilowatt hours. So now I'm switching from power to energy with solar. Total, I've consumed five hundred and something, but minus that a hundred from solar brings it to four hundred and something. I don't remember. And yeah, it looks like the car is dominating at a hundred and something. And that makes sense because my wife drives that back and forth to the hospital every day, about six miles a day. But doesn't, we don't have to spend any money on gasoline, so that's cool. And then the water heaters are the other big ones. Normally, heating would be a big one, but I'm burning wood right now. Probably run out in January and then it'll switch to natural gas. But yeah, this app is super cool. I think the equipment on Amazon is like ninety bucks. So if you have parents that own their house or something, you should talk to them about this because once you install it, you'll save so much money quickly because you're actually aware of where the where the energy is going, where the money is going. Right? You can think of it like a leaky faucet. There are so many things I didn't even realize that were going on in my house till I got this this app. But yeah, you have to be a nerd to to like it, though. And don't don't kill yourself installing it on your mainframe. All right, back to autofocus. The name of the app is Emporia. Yeah, so it's really a piece of hardware that you buy. And yeah, you clip all the inductors onto your your main fuse box, and then the app comes comes free. And although there's like a little transmitter. Yeah, it's it's, I love it. Yeah. About the final, I do have a section on the second law of thermodynamics. I describe some phenomena and you have to identify it as a first law phenomena or a second law phenomena. Realize that this is kind of a trick question because everything is going to be first law. That's that's fundamental part of the universe. And so the trick will be trying to think about like what the energy conversion is and where the entropy goes. So like one question might be, you know, I'm riding my bicycle and I squeeze the the handbrakes. Would that be a second law or first law phenomena? And if it's a second law, what's the energy conversion and where does the energy go? Where is it dissipated? Where is it lost to? So squeezing the handbrake on a bike, what's happening there? What energy moved to what energy and where did it go? Any guesses?
Kinetic energy being converted into heat energy at the brakes. Yeah. Yeah, and then the heat just kind of dissipates into the air, into the environment. Feeding a cat a bowl of cat food. Chemical or thermal? Yeah, Aaron's got it again. Most things kind of go to go to thermal. I don't know. My voice making this microphone move.
Maybe you just have a very powerful voice.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's basically kinetic to pressure, which is a type of kinetic to electromagnetic to electricity. And there'll be energy loss along the way, right? There'll be, there's always waste heat being produced. In short, most all the answers to the final will be second law phenomena because that's you only under very special circumstances is energy never isn't lost to to waste heat. But thinking about what's being converted to what will be very helpful there. There'll be a question about net energy analysis on the final. So review that lecture. I'll have you look at a wind plant and calculate its energy return on energy invested. Again, with all with all this final, we'll have a we'll have a month to do it. I mean, a month, a week to do it. It'll be that last week of the quarter, dead week, not finals week. And we'll spend that week listening to each other's podcasts and getting help working together on the final in class. Open book, open note, all that stuff. I'll only respond to questions about the final during class, so it's fair to everybody. But generally, it should be pretty chill. Again, it's a one on one class. I want people to learn about things and get excited about things, not be punished and defeated and want to quit, you know, so that's the point. Any other questions about the homework or the final? Energy apps? How are you all doing on the podcast? Any questions about that? It's it's been weird for me because normally I have my office open and allow you different groups to record in my office. But are you able to navigate that in in the Ethernet, in the Internet? Yeah. Okay. Let me know if if that's not working out for you. We can figure it out. I'm hoping that like with each group of six people, there's at least one person with with the ability to record some audio. And now with phones, it should be a lot easier. All right. Have a good weekend. I'll hang out for the next five minutes in case anybody has anything.
Have a good day, sir.
You, too.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Mr. V.
My pleasure.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, did you mention the issues with the solar panels in the different locations?
Yeah, they're not nearly as severe as the wind, but mainly it's the best solar is not well correlated with population centers. So like the best soul in the United States is Mojave in the Sonora Desert, and nobody lives there.
Okay.